Welcome to the work session for January 7th. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
We don't have to do that. Are we doing that?
Yeah.
We'll do it.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
But I didn't mean you didn't have to do that.
No, you did not, do you?
I did it anyway.
He's the president. He can do what he wants.
All right, first up is Juliette and Tito.
Roll call.
Roll call. Let's do the roll call.
Councilman Scrangie.
Present.
Councilman Livingston.
Present.
Councilwoman Price.
Present.
Councilman Taylor.
Present.
Councilman Papastra.
Present.
Councilman Matso.
Present.
President Scanlon.
Present.
All seven here.
All right, let's talk to Juliette and Tito then. We're going to talk about the final zoning update.
So if you recall, at the last planning committee meeting, we went through the full summary of the zoning updates amendment. At that time, the main sort of point of contention was home occupation, so we made some changes to that section. And we're here to answer any questions you still might have on that section or any other section, and to request that it be sent to the planning commission for a review.
Any questions? Comments?
Well, we looked, I mean, I looked at all the changes, and I think we covered pretty much what we were concerned about in our last meeting. So we'll wait to see what the changes are from the, or from the additions from the planning commission, and then we'll come back to us again, right?
Yes.
No questions from me either. Any other questions?
No.
I'm just excited, thank you. Thank you very much.
And when will you be giving this to the planning board?
It'll be Monday.
Monday?
In time for them to hear 31 Front Street.
Okay.
Do you want to find it out?
I'll move to...
When is the next planning meeting?
Monday.
What is tonight, then?
Monday.
Tonight is zoning night.
Zoning board?
Amendment.
I need a motion to move this to the planning commission?
Motion to move this to the planning commission.
I'll second that.
Second by Matso.
What do we all think about 31 Front Street?
Don't want it.
Is that the...
That's the Decker Mansion.
I was actually...
Because if we're all against that, we could do a, I mean, some sort of unanimous statement coming from council or...
And then I also spoke to Binghamton University today about the chances of making that into a satellite for Binghamton, for the west side, so...
That's cool.
Now, is that, were they buying that a contingency of making it student housing?
Yes.
They were.
On contingency, yeah.
Well, he wants it student housing.
No.
No, he didn't buy it yet. He's looking to buy it, but he wants to make it student housing.
Yeah, I don't, I don't agree with student housing over there. You've got a historical piece of property that's been for... I think you got a unanimous...
The residents are so against it.
I believe, Joe, you're against it?
Yeah, I've had a number of residents contact more about it.
Dave, you're against it?
I, I'm still learning about it. I mean, I'm not, I'm still interested in talking with other folks about it. I did go on a tour of it with the prospective owner, Mr. President.
Go ahead.
Sharon, is the vote from the planning board regarding Decker Mansion, is that the final say, so to speak?
Planning Commission is vested with the sole authority to make that determination as to the grants on 31 Front Street. Obviously, the legislation that would affect a project like 31 Front Street with regards to limitations of the number of units, for example, and corresponding bedrooms falls solely within the discretion of the city council.
Right.
My suggestion is because there is no way a piece of legislation is getting passed by the time PC is likely to hear that...
Correct, that's what I was just about to say.
My suggestion is if you have opinions on the matter, you should issue a joint letter or bipartisan letter with regards to what that opinion is to PC by the time they review it on Monday.
So nothing would come back to us post the meeting, post the vote?
It's like with traffic board.
Right.
Well, no, it's not like traffic board, because we have review within 30 days of action.
So it's not like traffic board.
And it's PC that's looking at the site plan, if there are any variances that are associated with it, will then go before ZBAN.
But we don't have, if the planning commission recommends it, passes it. At one point, I thought that the city council could override that if they did not choose to go for it.
That's, that's my question, because if it, if it comes back to us, or we have, we have some post-ability afterward, I almost think it would be better to...
This is, this sounds to me like the traffic board, which Ken Frank informed us, once we put a commission in place, that's their job.
No, traffic board, we can, we can review action by traffic board up to 30 days after.
Oh, yeah, no, I've had traffic board several times.
So maybe, I mean, if we give a letter regarding the, and they go ahead and pass it anyway...
Which is really just a site plan review?
Right.
It won't be... Two-part process. So it won't be, it won't be approved on Monday.
So that's to do with the site, it's the amount of bedrooms and stuff like that?
Landscaping, buffering, lighting, parking.
So the point is that...
It is a public hearing on Monday.
Correct.
So they had the initial meeting last month, so this would be the public hearing on Monday, and they could issue a final decision on Monday.
Oh, yeah, if there's enough neighbors that are against it, and, and the city legislators aren't, don't like it either, it seems like they're, instead of having to move this thing forward and prolong an answer that seems to be against the developers, I think the quicker that, that is realized, the better, so that there isn't money wasted or time wasted. It's something that, it's not, that it's not going to have any legs.
I can say this from the Office of Supervision Council, what I will do is I will look into it tomorrow to see whether or not, under any circumstance, a decision of the planning commission could come back to you for review. It is my understanding that planning commission is vested with the sole authority and discretion to determine things like site plan review. We have had this issue in the past before.
Right.
It doesn't mean I've read everything under the sun on it.
Yeah.
So I can tell you by the time we turn around to our business meeting, we can send something either via email to you guys beforehand, that kind of codifies what the, what the state of play is, and makes recommendations for those people who are those members who are opposed to projects.
Right.
Chris, I was talking about the, the traffic board before, but it was the planning commission that, when you asked, John asked about the cell tower on my district.
Right, yeah.
We had no authority, because Ken said you put that commission in place, and that's their job.
But they brought it down to us to begin with, and we, it was not approved by us.
In the end, though, it was, Ken said, we have no choice once they approve, once they vote on it, so we...
I'll tell you, the one reason I brought, I remember my first term, there was an issue about some planters that were, and they were approved, and it came to city council for a final approval, because there was a lot of controversy. And it failed at city council, so... Were those really the ones on Front Street? Yeah. It, they wanted, it was, it was a little bit complicated, but it just seems like there must be some type of... Yeah, I mean... Depending on, and I, I don't think the planning commission would do something that the neighbors and city council would definitely be asking.
Does the planning commission have to take a vote on Monday?
They could probably. Um, do they have to issue a final decision? No. They, they do have to sort of move business along, they can vote to take it.
Is it, is it, the reason why I bring this up is because, from what it sounds like, an overwhelming number of residents and constituents that I'm hearing from are against this, but if there's an ability to be able to do something post the public hearing, but pre a decision rendered, a unanimous letter from us at that point would actually be stronger, because now we actually have things that we've heard that may have been taken into account in that meeting that we can actually cite specifically, rather than just a broader, the word on the street is that this isn't a liked idea. And I think that actually makes our argument stronger.
It'd be a question for the attorneys' office, but I think that once you close the public hearing, you can't submit new documents to the record.
Yeah, I think it makes more sense for us to sign something in this week ahead of the public hearing.
Or maybe we can get lead...
That would be my recommendation. If, if council has what I would call issues with, with giving out the jurisdiction that you think should belong to you, there are potential legislative carve-outs that we can make to our code. So I would suggest potentially looking at amending the jurisdictional authority of PC under certain circumstances, but as our legislation exists now, there's no time to do that before the project comes on. And also, for the sake of the record, the legislation has been in the works for many moons, and is not, is part of an effort to quash a particular, particular developer. It's, I think Juliette, Dr. Brohling stated the need for this before I got here.
The need for what?
For this only match.
Yes.
I think that regardless of whatever amendments we make, if, if all seven council members unanimously agree, I think it would be prudent to have Lee draft a letter to the planning commission, basically stating that we have some troubles with the conversion...
Reservations.
Reservations. And I, and I think that, you know, we don't even necessarily say, you know, we have, we have trouble with student housing, well, what really, and now I'm just speaking for myself, you can tell me if you guys all agree with us, but I think it's just, it's an issue, you know, creating a 16-unit, you know, apartment, you know, with 16 bedrooms. That's really where, you know, you don't want to be turning, you know, a beautiful historic structure into a, into a snore team house, or into a frat house, or something like that.
It's happened too, way too many times in the city, where it shouldn't have happened.
So, so if, if we want to put our, put our foot down with the letter to the planning commission, I think that, you know, that would be an example that we could cite, that we, you know, we're worried about creating, you know, such a significant multi-unit dwelling on, on Front Street, and basically taking it from that angle.
And you have residences on the other side of the street with that 50 front, well, 50 and 50 front and River House.
Yeah, but there's, but there's a lot of the properties that are mansions on the other side of Front Street are already frats and student housing. And there's, you know, the residents are fed up with that. They don't want anymore.
Lee or Jess, why don't you guys draw this up, saying the city council has reservation that concerns about the project moving forward? Whoever wants to sign it, the city council can go to the clerk's office and sign it.
Yeah, I'll do that.
Send us an email once, very soon.
Yeah.
I'll send you guys a draft out of time, and we'll do that.
Okay.
Do by the 14th.
If you send that to me, I will just straighten it to the planning commission.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions?
That's it.
Okay, thank you, guys.
Thank you. Can I ask one more before you? On the, the sign, zoning is in this legislation also. Signs? The regulations for signs are in this chapter, but we didn't address them, because that was updated, I think, three years ago. Yeah, the only thing I just wanted to, that I've heard, that I don't know how true it is or whatever, but under writer's lavatories, it's a UL that you see on a lot of your courses, and the signs are supposed to have these. And I've heard that there are signs that are going up that don't show that label. And that if there were, if there was a fire of some sort, from the sign, that the city could be liable if it's approving signs in our UL, or some other entity that approves, approves signs. Is that something that is in our code?
It is currently in the code, yes, that electric signs have to have a UL label on it.
Or an ETL label, right? ETL in the second one. And it's in, it's another, like a ETL.
That's in the...
So anyway, we're, so, so who checks to see if that's, if that's the case?
At the time of installation, the electric inspector should probably be checking that. The zoning officer is also authorized to check that because...
So do they check signs when they're going up?
The zoning officer does not check signs when they're being installed. He issues a sign permit to make sure the sign's compliant before it, before it goes up.
All right, so the sign permit states that it should be a UL or ETL, whatever.
It has to be.
Okay.
Probably do a better job following up on that.
Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Up next, Chief Eggleston.
Hello, Chief.
Hi, Chief.
Good evening. I'm just looking forward to later here, move some money around through some... Let's speak on a couple of these things for the chief, since I'm more familiar with them than people do. The very first one there, RL 1903, if you remember, we came in and removed money around in December for the sick bank that they donate to. Some people donated afterwards, and we need to move an additional $1,553.45 into that account. We're taking it from his equipment line that's under book. That's the first one there.
Any questions on that?
No.
Okay, chief on 05?
I'll clarify something at the end.
We just have to remove 1,500 to the title line, increase $8,000 for our holiday pay lines, $80 for manual and studio pay line, and $42,000 for an open...
Got it.
It's going to come from...
The first form line is things that we make, that's in the budget process, that we're on the budget end. The last one is, chief has come and talked about the overtime in the past to everybody here, and we got the final bill, and $42,000 should be sufficient to cover it. And where he's going to take the money from is, I'm taking another $6,000 out of his equipment line, $5,000 out of his operating supplies, $5,000 out of his uniforms, and then there's a revenue account, other tax items that we get, we charge out, and then we have $80,000, excuse me, $65,000 over budget. So I want to use $35,580. It says 25,580 there. Chief and I talked, and just a little while ago, the professional service line is something that's not in the system yet, so we can't use that.
So you're using $35,580?
Yeah. $35,580, change it, increase it by $10,000, and subtract out the professional service line.
Okay.
I, I was looking at this earlier, and it, it looks like for the equipment line, the $6,000 one, there, there's three sets of numbers there, and 5410 is not one of the numbers in the budget.
It should be 34, it should be 8, 34, 10, 52, 600.
52, okay, so the 5410 is not, okay.
Any questions?
Nope. Nope. Thank you, chief.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you both. Mark Donovan's not going to be here tonight. And basically, what's with this line is, the cost of producing bags, this is 1872, we're under budget on, and the reason for that is we're selling more bags, our actual revenue in the refuse fund is up too, okay? So I'm asking to move $21,000 from the tipping fee, which was supposed to be under budget, to their bag production bag, to their production of city bags.
We sold that much more, huh? That's good. It's a good thing. Is it more money for bags, or we're selling, we're buying more bags?
Bags are the same cost, we're just selling more bags, which is quite amazing, considering that we took the stickers thing off, you'd think more people would be throwing stuff out.
Maybe they'd like a cleaner house.
We're up, I think, like $30,000 dollars in bags now.
Good.
All right. Very nice.
No, we have some questions about that in the budget.
Yeah.
We'll see if we get there.
Any questions? All right. Chuck, we'll move on to yours then.
Okay, this was, if you remember, last year, a lady retired out of the planning department, the housing department, and we filled that, filled it with a position. We did the calculation, we left off the final week's worth of pay, so this is to pay her $324 for two weeks of pay that we didn't, that we needed there. So we did that, so we just made adjustments, yes.
Okay. Any questions?
Just a comment, as required by labor law, we are required to pay people for their work, so we've actually done it.
Good practice. Good municipality.
Okay, Chuck on 01907.
Okay, 1907, this is a new contract that you guys have never seen before. What it is, is when we borrow money, we cannot make money off that, meaning that if I borrow money for 3%, I can't invest it someplace else and make 3.4% or something like that. We've never really had the issue to even be worried about, because interest rates have been so low. I was talked to by our bond counsel, and I went out and got two quotes from two different people that do this. And basically, what it's going to do is set us up so that we can track this every year, every single month, to make sure that we're not what they call an arbitrage situation, where we're making more money than what we're paying for the money that we're borrowing. Once we get it set up, hopefully I can keep this in place going forward every month, and not have to pay this every year, but just at least get us set up for the first year, and then go back for the money we borrowed in 2014, and take it out to 2018, to make sure that we're in compliance. Okay? I don't think we're out of compliance, okay? But to give you an example, last year, I borrowed money in April, say it was $40 million, and it was at 3% interest. At the end of last year, we were up at like 2.2% interest is what I was getting on treasury bills, okay? In the past, we were only getting like 30 basis points, or 0.3%, or 0.5%. But since we started investing in the treasury bills, the numbers gotten much higher, and that difference has gotten closer. So this will help ensure that we're accurate.
Well, thank you.
I was going to say, Chuck, when we talked earlier, you, you said that your interest was long-term to maybe systematize this and do it in-house. Do you have a sense of how, you know, how long that might take, how many years, or...
Hopefully, once we do this, it starts up, it has to be tracked every month, like from this going from 14 to 18, we have to track all of our spending every month.
So once you see them doing it for a while, you figure, you'll pick it up pretty quick?
I'll have it all calculated up through the end of December.
Okay.
And then we can just carry it forward, hopefully.
Any other questions?
Just to make a quick point, just to tell Councilman Taylor that I made a mistake on the agenda, I put RL 1907 under finance, but it's supposed to be an MPA, but it's tracked on the RL.
Municipal public affairs. I'm not on that one.
Thank you, Jess. Chuck, 08.
08 is an amendment 2019, finance DPW budget for responsibility adjustment. This is a girl in my office, I should say, a lady in my office, that has been doing this since a lady in the DPW department got sick and has been out, she's going to be out for an additional six months. In the meantime, personnel in DPW is looking to hire a part-time person to do this, but I need to pay this girl for doing this up through the end of, up through the end of February, I'm estimating, okay? And so that's what this $480, what I'm estimating it to be. Along with that, once they hire somebody, you need to move money out of a permanent line to a temporary line. That's what the $16,722 is. Right now, that position's in a permanent line, we're going to hire someone on a temporary basis, because that person still has a right to that job, okay? Whether that person's able to come back or not, that's still to be decided. But we do need to get someone in there temporarily, fairly soon.
Okay. Any questions?
Nope.
Thank you, Chuck.
Thank you.
Now, we're looking for Jared Krenn.
Jared in the house? Jared here? Oh, I didn't know he was lost. I didn't see him, but he's hanging.
He's a good boy.
Oh, yeah.
How's everyone doing?
Good.
Councilman Eggleston, welcome. Thanks. That's good. So I have RL 1902, which is to amend the 2019 budget for increased expenditure in and anticipated revenue for installation of an EV charging station and the NYSERA rebate. So how this is going to work is, NYSERA offers up to $4,000 per charging point as a rebate, and we're going to get two, service, two city-owned zero emission vehicles, all electric. And so this will pay for the entirety of the cost of the two charging stations. So we install at the Collier Street lot, and those two EV cars will be parked there. When lease renovations is done, and the loading dock downstairs gets a little cleaned up, we anticipate buying a little bit cheaper model, so the cars can be parked there, and then we'll open up these sort of high-level ones to the public, so it'll be EV charging, parking only in those two spots. So we are paying for the actual purchase of the EV charging stations through this NYSERA rebate program, and we will be paying for any other associated costs as part of our $250,000 Climate Spark Community Grant, which was awarded, I think, in 2017. So, so we don't have to...
What vehicles are we getting?
Nissan Leaf.
And you said after the, the less expensive charging stations are put in the police garage, you said?
Yeah.
These ones are going to stay in the Collier Street room?
These ones will stay for free use by the general public.
Got it.
And these also have a, were required by NYSERA to purchase a couple of years of a service pack, so that the data will be sent to the cloud, and we'll be able to monitor how much are being used, that type of thing.
Are they fairly standard, these stations, for all types of vehicles that are electric?
Yep. We're purchasing a level-two charging station, which almost all cars in North America have a standard plug. Teslas have a little bit different of a plug, but with every Tesla, the owners have a little adapter kit to plug into these, because these are pretty much, pretty much the, they're the exact same type that's in the rep car.
And this NYSERA, when I was reading through the legislation, they, they're offering incentives to small businesses that have parking lots that want to put in the charging stations?
And as is the city of Binghamton. So as part of that $250,000 grant, the majority of that will be spent on incentives like this for small businesses, commercial areas, and homeowners to do green energy types of projects. So there's a lot of expiring NYSERA rebates, we wanted to kind of jump on this, but it's called Charge Ready Network, this program.
Any questions?
Nope.
Under 1904, Jared.
Okay. This is amendment 2019, snow budget, to allow for a temporary services line. The city has interviewed and secured about a half dozen CDL drivers. These are licensed drivers who can operate snow plows, and have them as a potential on-call in emergency situations for snow plowing. So obviously, DPW will handle snow plowing, as is, but in emergency-type situations, we have this other list of individuals that can augment that work in case of a, if it's an issue. These are all CDL certified, and they've been trained by a nearest state VLT. So this is a funding mechanism to pay them if necessary, and we don't, we don't have to do any...
I think it's a good idea.
Hey, Jess, we got to bring this transaction back to 1 for, okay?
These guys came in, guess I'm sure we have these guys.
Any questions on 01904? All right, Jared, 01906.
This is consecutive amendments to the 2018 budget of purchase real property. The purchases and also the taxes that are due when we purchase these properties and fees, we just need this to be able to close this year.
Jared, am I wrong? These are all, these are taxes, correct?
Say it again, I wasn't working, sorry.
So sometimes we put them under this misnomer because that is the category until the edifices of real property, but these are taxes of properties that the city has already purchased.
Most of the properties that we buy...
Like that taxes?
Yes.
Okay.
That's how we usually buy them.
From the county?
Yes. That's the normal situation.
Got you.
Any questions on 01906? Thank you, Jared.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I have a quick question.
Sure.
I sent in a piece of legislation and I was just curious to know what the status of that was, why it didn't show up in tonight's...
I'll defer to counsel.
Sure.
Sure, we were about to talk about this today.
Yeah, I had to run out, sorry about that.
When you were in my office. So typically what we would do before we ask any department heads to kind of start doing budget calculation, is just kind of do a straw poll for people who are interested, right? At that point, we can bring in our IT department and they can, and Lori is probably best positioned to talk about how to actually make this feasible, what the costs are. So I haven't had that conversation with Lori, having just got back today. So what I would suggest kind of doing tonight is taking a straw poll to see if there's a sufficient amount of interest to then direct Lori to potentially monetize this budget, see whether or not it's practical. And you guys can do that as part of your ordinary and other business here at City Council.
Do you want to explain it? Yeah, so in a New York State open meetings law, there's a provision that says that if a municipality or any sort of governing body is already live-streaming its proceedings on any, any sort of platform, so given that we live-stream on Spectrum, we fall under this. The business meetings upstairs.
You're talking about public meetings law 103F?
I don't, you know, I don't have the...
Is that the provision that you cited in your ledge?
Yeah.
Okay, so that provision of public meetings law technically applies to members and bodies that are appointed by the governor. But that's, otherwise, we would be required to do it by law as-is. With that said, that doesn't mean that you can't raise open meetings law to try and make a government even more transparent, but that citation in your draft ledge is a bit of a misuse of it. And so particularly when we're talking about a piece of legislation that's pro-transparency, we want it to be as clear and true as possible.
Sure, well, then I'll speak sort of to the side of that and just say that the idea was basically that since we're already streaming it to Spectrum, we really should provide the stream on our city's website and archive them either on YouTube and provide the links on the city's website.
That'd be expensive, that'd be very expensive.
Actually, archiving on YouTube is free.
But we'd have to pay somebody to do it.
To archive the...
Who's going to archive that? We'd have to have the secretary or somebody to archive it. We'd have to have budgets.
Yeah, I mean, I could archive it. I mean, I'd be happy to take the time and set it up.
We would need like a paid employee. I mean, I don't know, I just don't know how expensive that would be. That's the biggest thing, our thing is budgeting.
Yeah, yeah, I understand. I mean, it's, just to give you a sense, like it's just a matter, we already have all of the videos archived here in City Hall. It would just be a matter of uploading them.
How do we archive that City Hall?
We have them on discs, apparently. They're like each meeting is on its own DVD, yeah.
Oh, so we have to upload it into...
I personally, I personally think it's certainly a warranted conversation. This is something that municipalities do across the country and...
You just mean getting like a whole bunch of new equipment and whatnot.
I don't think there's any new equipment necessary. It's just a matter of having someone in IT or someone else spend what probably wouldn't be more than, you know, 20 minutes every two weeks uploading something to YouTube. I don't think it would be that time-consuming. I think it's a really, really great way of increasing government transparency.
You're talking about the meetings that we're recording now at Spectrum to upload them?
Exactly, because no one sees them.
Well, from what I understand, I have not seen them since their equipment has, is antiquated and it's not working properly. So we have one camera facing City Council.
All the City Council.
All the City Council, like before, we used to get, when we had someone operating it, each person that when they were speaking was able to get a camera on them. They were all positioned to, for the chairs. And a lot of times the sound isn't, we hear that, you know, the sound isn't coming through. The quality itself isn't very good. I mean, I have not seen the DVDs to see exactly what they look like. So if we're not producing a quality product, I don't think it's something you want to just post on YouTube if it's not something that can be seen clearly or heard.
We're already broadcasting whatever quality product we have right now.
I understand that we're broadcasting it because we still want to broadcast it, but that equipment that we have that Time Warner stopped servicing really...
It looks like 40-year-old equipment.
Yeah, I've been looking into getting it.
So we're doing it because Lee and Jessica are going up to turn the camera on, but that's one camera that we have facing all the City Council. And I can say it's not, it's not quality that, I think that the city would want to say this is what we have on YouTube.
I think that that's fair and I think that that brings up the separate yet important conversation that we should update that equipment. But the truth of the matter is that a lot of residents in our city that might be interested in what's going on at City Council can't make it down at 6:30 or can't tune in at 6:30 or don't have access to that.
Or can I add, can't actually make it into City Council chambers. And my father came to my swearing-in and it took him like 20 minutes to walk up that flight of stairs.
He'd have a lift.
Well, I mean, he would have to actually go up and then like outside and it's pretty rough.
So, so I, the reason that I think that it makes so much sense is because it is a very, very low-cost way of just bringing one more thing in terms of transparency into the way that our government works and I don't think that it would be that big of a deal. Now with that being said, we need to talk to Lori about it.
Absolutely, absolutely, yeah.
And we need to discuss it amongst ourselves.
And Lori was, was out last week. She just had actually twin grand, grand children.
Yeah, very nice.
Oh, she did.
So that's kind of why last week we didn't get into it. But she's back now, so we can have that conversation with Lori and go from there.
Yeah, I wasn't alarmed that it wasn't on the agenda. I was just curious because this is my first meeting, I want to get a sense for how this is going to work.
We have three or three people who are interested in having Lori do a review of capacity for live stream.
Well, I'll have Lori do that, you know, separate from council, so we can, we can have her look into it.
We can talk about it.
It's an idea of some sort.
I like yeses, that's great. Yeah, and welcome, welcome to City Council. As you know, our office is always open. There are things in your ledge that are slightly inconsistent with our code, but I do want you to feel free to draft away. So I can go over those with you at a later date.
I'm down.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, any legislation, Jess?
So what we have coming up on Wednesday are smiles that were submitted in 2018. One of them is to amend the parks budget, do you find a senior park senior and add an additional labor because the parks think that a labor would be of better use than a more park senior. The next one is to amend the title of pub manager/ grants administrator to manager, comma, pub administration, housing. The next one is an agreement with an outside agency for fire consolidation study. The next one is agreement with Central New York Fair Hyelp Housing for $5,000. And then the last one is to amend 2019 economic development budget to continue funding a temporary part-time clerical position for the EMA buyout grant.
Do you have the reference numbers for those?
I could provide those too.
Please, thank you.
Is that all on preferred agenda?
Although Dan, if they can't be possibly on preferred agenda yet because Dan has not reviewed them.
Oh, he would have to sign on.
Yeah, because the preferred agendas for, I don't know, anything in this, so because Dan hasn't reviewed them yet, so we can't presume what's going on.
Send them to me soon and maybe, I'll look at them.
By tomorrow.
I can look, I can look at them tomorrow morning and figure out. When would you need me to respond in order to get the preferred agenda locked in? Like what's the deadline? Is it like 24 hours?
Well, it can always go, it can always go on non-preferred, right? I think City Council's preference is always to post the agenda as it exists.
As quickly as possible.
As quickly as possible. Not that it's required by law, but it's certainly helpful for our residents and for our City Council members.
When did this, when was this signed up? It was in December, wasn't it?
Yeah, it's in the middle of December.
So we have, I mean, it is signed up.
It has full sponsorship.
Full sponsorship, so that...
It's just a question of whether or not it's on your preferred or on your non-preferred, which will be at Councilman Livingston.
Because that council person is no longer here. That would make Dan the preferred council person.
Yeah, just send it to me and I'll, I'll deal with it tomorrow. If you, if you want to find out, let me know in email.
COB Tuesday would be great for her.
Yeah, yeah, just let me know in email when you need it back by and I'll...
President Skinner, I forgot to ask about the Nicerta change. We could expedite that. The only thought is, is that those vehicles could be here at some point, they were ordered in November, so I'm not sure when.
We can't charge them, they don't go anywhere.
We can have them go wrecked for a couple of days if we need to, but...
I just want to add one more thing on as we talk about expediting things. I'm sure everyone saw my email. You know, Mr. Clerk, you provided a very thoughtful response, thank you for that. We just want to sort of, you know, it seems to me like one of the biggest reasons that sometimes agendas are, I think we all agree, too late is because, you know, we'll expedite a whole bunch of legislation on a Monday and that needs to be ready by a Wednesday and that makes that really difficult for the finance office, for, you know, the controller's office, for the clerk's office. So, you know, I think this directive would come from the council president, but, you know, if, if it comes to a point, at any point, you know, in the future where the clerk's office or finance office or corporation council's office feels like there is too much and if more is expedited, they will not be able to get an agenda out 24 hours before a meeting, which is what is required by law, then they need to speak up or council president needs to represent that and it should be our number-one priority or responsibility regardless of what, you know, legislation comes in late, you know, to make sure that that can happen. And I think that we as a council should empower, you know, our clerk's office to be able to make, to put the foot down because, you know, making sure that we have those agendas out as early as possible and specifically 24 hours before meetings as required by law should be, you know, important to us.
I know Ken would disagree with that interpretation of that provision, but I think that doesn't, I haven't looked at it, so I can't speak to my personal knowledge about it. What I can say is I still think that your inquiry and suggestion is germane to this board, to this council and it should be considered. But did Ken respond to you?
No.
I think we should wait for Ken's response on that, Congress, but I hear what you're saying though.
Regardless of whether or not it's required by law, it doesn't necessarily mean what you, that should dictate your minimum standards.
Right, exactly.
I have one thing, if you don't mind. So at the organizational meeting, as a formality, we need, City Council needs to approve the meetings for 2019 and that's one thing that we forgot to do. So coming up on this business meeting, I want to say I'm going to make that agenda item so we can...
Okay.
Calendar.
The calendar.
2019.
I know we discussed it at a work session, but we weren't, it wasn't actually voted on. So that would be...
We can do that.
And then I'll email all of you about the agenda meeting schedule that we came up with. So if you have any comments.
Sounds great. Perfect. Anything else we need to discuss? And then Chuck mentioned that we have one from our last business meeting that needs to be amended slightly with the van principal. But we'll, we'll send it around to you. Okay, sounds good. All right, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion, second.